All right, I know in the interest of time with the ground we have to cover and graduations and meetings, I am going to remind everyone right now that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. And so please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning if that's your interest. At this time, I call to order the work session in the Maricopa County Community Colleges District Governing Board of May 9, 2023. Again, for the record, though not mandatory, I will call a roll call vote of board members. Mr. Burnett.
I am here.
Thank you. And are you two feet on the ground?
On the ground.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
With my president, we have all board members present, including our student trustee. So
our work session is regarding the Maricopa County College District 2023 Employee Survey Results. We've done this in the past, looking to do it, and we did it more recently. Dr. Gonzalez, if you're here and present, would you like to introduce our presenters, please? So it is possible that his connection is not working. So I'm going to turn this over to Human Resources. Dr. Kelly, are you present?
Yes, I am President Sullivan.
Okay, and you're going to start us off then on this. And before you start, did you think of a song?
Yes, I have a song for you this evening.
Oh, good.
Good afternoon, members of the board, CEC members and guests. Our song for this evening is "Celebration" from Cool in the Game, as we are celebrating the small wins within the Employee Engagement Survey and acknowledging that we have much work to do.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Okay, turning the presentation over to you, Neil. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Again, as mentioned, a good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC members and guests. Thank you for this opportunity to present the results of the 2023 Employee Engagement Survey. With me today, I have Thomas Olsen from DecisionWise, our consultant, Megan Torme from HR, and Matt Ashcraft from Institutional Effectiveness. I will now turn it over to Mr. Olsen to take us through the presentation.
Thank you so much. Good to be with you all, President Sullivan, members of the board, chancellor, CEC, and guests. Excited to present the results of the Employee Engagement Survey that we did recently. Should I just let you know when to forward? Elsa, are you the one to have control of the slides here? Perfect.
Yes, please.
Go to the next slide, please. So today, we're gonna go, we'll do a quick overview of your, what engagement is. We'll look at some overall results. We'll talk about some demographics. I won't go too much into detail with those. You have those. I think you have received the presentation. We'll do, we'll talk about engagement, look at what we call an intent-to-stay or attrition analysis, few common themes, and then we'll dive a little bit deeper into some of the individual questions. Again, you have the data, so we will try and go pretty quickly. But it's always important to keep in mind, the survey data is, it's really important. It's nice to get this feedback from our employees. But there's so many other things that go into that equation. And that's where a lot of people out in the colleges, the presidents of each college are, you know, they knows what's going on in their different departments. Some of the challenges that they face, there's certainly departments out there that are struggling more than others. Maybe they've had a hard time finding the right people. Maybe there's some new supervisors or some managers out there. Those are all things that go into this equation that is the employee experience. If you go to the next slide, we call it an engagement survey because we're really interested in creating engagement. We know that if somebody is engaged in their job, they tend to perform better. They tend to stick around a little bit longer. They tend to be the type of person that's proactive, that creates a really great experience for their coworkers, for students. And that's really what we're interested in, to create an environment where somebody chooses to engage. Now, we also asked some questions on the survey that were more satisfaction-type questions. We want to know if people have the right training, they have the tools and resources to do their job. Are they feeling stressed? Those are things that are important to figure out as well and act upon. If you go to the next slide, we use this magic acronym here at DecisionWise. We've been in business for about 25 years, and we found over those years that these different areas here are drivers of engagement. So if somebody has meaning in their job, if they have a sense of autonomy, they feel like they can do their job without too much supervision, they have growth opportunities, both learning skill sets that are different than maybe what they came in with, opportunities for advancement, and then impact, are they making a difference both in their own lives and in the lives of students, maybe coworkers? And then connection, are they connected to the mission of the organization that they work for? Next slide is looking at your participation. So you can see over the years when we've done an engagement survey, we've had a hard time getting over that 37%, but this year, really, really great increase in participation, so 45% participation here. We'd always love more participation, but this is a great win to have eight-point difference here than we saw in 2019. And really, when we approached the 50% participation mark, we're actually pretty confident in the data. The confidence interval is what we look at there. And the margin of error starts getting a lot smaller. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the individual colleges here. You'll also see the district office. And you can see that the district office still has the most participation of any of these divisions or colleges. They did drop a little bit from 2019, but still has the most participation. And then all of the colleges themselves increased their participation level. So again, some really nice wins here. We're getting more employees to participate. If you go to a couple of slides, let's go to the next one, one more here. We look at the next couple of slides, we talk about favorability. That's when somebody agreed or strongly agreed with a question. Questions are designed on a five-point scale. Somebody could also have a more unfavorable opinion. That would be when they disagreed or strongly disagreed. And then we have that neutral response that sometimes can be frustrating. People are not really choosing either way. But I think the neutral is an interesting choice because it's somebody that has maybe seen some change happen over the years, and they want to see a little bit more happen. So they don't disagree. They have seen some changes, but they don't agree either because they want to continue to see that we take action and that we make some changes. And I think the neutral response is a much easier person to move into favorability than somebody that strongly disagrees. If you go to the next slide, we'll see here the overall score trend. So you can see, again, a really nice win, 65% was the overall favorability in 2019. Now we're at 70%. So a five-point increase here over the years in overall favorability. Let's go to the next slide. And here, we're looking at different dimensions. So we asked questions that were more about somebody's individual job. Some there were more department-specific, direct supervisor-specific. We also asked some questions that were more towards the college and district office. And then we had 21 questions that were asking about Maricopa County Community Colleges District. And you can see that all of these dimensions increased, except for college and district office that stayed the same as 2019. So again, some nice wins here. We're moving things in the right direction. Now, the next slide, and then the following slide, these are, we're looking at the data now, more specifically, for each of the colleges, we're looking at some different demographics groups. And here, again, we can see the positive is that there's been increases across all the different colleges. There's a nine-point spread here, and this is certainly not a competition. But I think this allows us to really action and say, what are some of the differences? Can we learn something from some of these colleges that are doing things a little bit differently? Do they have, have they taken some action over the years that have really paid off? But we really celebrate here that all of these groups have increased. Next slide, please. This is one of the things we looked at, we'll kind of, I'll kind of skip through. If you go to the next slide, this was employee class. We looked at employment status. Was there a big difference between part-time and full-time? You can see that there is. And we'll just, won't spend too much time here. Let's go to the next slide. Manager status, we looked at as well. Managers are a little bit less favorable in their scores. If you go to the next slide, you'll see tenure group, very typical, people that are less tenured, tend to be a little bit more favorable on a survey. Sometimes call it the honeymoon phase, and that it's where somebody is excited. They're joining a new organization, there's new opportunity. And then sometimes that we start seeing people being, you know, start thinking about maybe their opportunity for growth and different things that are going on. They have a little bit more insight into the organization. Let's skip a couple of slides ahead. Elsa, if you don't mind, yeah, let's keep going. We have gender. And now we're jumping into engagement. So this is where we now isolate five questions on our survey. We found that through the research that we've done over the years that these are, these are really good indicators of somebody's engagement level. And so what we're trying to measure here is if somebody engaged in the job that they're doing. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that depending on how somebody responded to those five questions, they are put into these four different levels of engagement. The first level is fully engaged. That would be if somebody strongly agreed with the questions that we just saw on the previous slide. Again, that's typically somebody that's maybe putting a little bit more discretionary effort into their job. They really look forward to coming to work. And I know we don't always maybe look forward to work even if we're engaged, but generally, that would be the sentiment there. They find that what they're doing has a lot of meaning. The key contributor group, this tends to be the largest group. And this is people that mostly agreed with the anchor questions that we saw on the previous slide. These two groups make up what we would say, this is the overall engagement of the employees that took the survey. Very strong number, you'll see here in just a minute why I say that. There's 4% that are fully disengaged, very common to see that, that size of a fully disengaged people. And now, it's not that we don't care about the 156 people that responded in such a way that they fall into that group. But those are a little bit harder to influence, and some of those people might already be looking for something else, another opportunity. Maybe they don't, the job didn't live up to their expectations. Maybe they have some, you know, some issues with their manager. Those could be different things that they see as challenges in their job. It's really the opportunity group, those that are a little bit more on the fence, the 14% there that we feel like we take some action. There are some of those people that we can move into to a more engaged state of what they're doing. On the next slide, you'll see the trends here. So you can see the first three columns here are the historical data. We have seen an increase in engagement from 78% overall to 82% this year. 78% is our global benchmark. So that's looking across 400-plus organizations that we work with. Now, that's a mix of different industries and different countries, of course, there. And then the colleges and universities, a much more specific benchmark that we compare you to, and that is 76% overall engagement. So you can see that employees at, in the Maricopa County colleges are actually very engaged, which is a very encouraging trend to see. The next slide is looking at the different colleges. And you can see here again, pretty much every college here is above that 78% that we seek globally for engagement. There's a few variances here, but overall, employees are engaged in what they're doing. The next slide will show some of the sentiment. I think that's always interesting to look at. If somebody is fully engaged, you can see the, what are some of their negative responses? There are some. Salary is fair based on the duties I perform. It's a little bit of a polarizing question. It's a question that often we find that not every employee agrees with. I think people always want to be paid more. It's very common to see that. We don't always ask this question here. So even people that are very engaged would still say, 17% would still disagree and say that their salary is fair. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that when we go down to our opportunity group and our fully disengaged group, you know, these are some questions about, does the MCCD leadership understand what's going on in my college? Are we engaging in the right amount of organizational change? Are my opinions listened to? The salary question shows up here. These are some of the concerns that these two groups of employees have. And this is partly why they didn't agree with some of our engagement anchor questions. We also, if you go to the next slide, we looked at some of the drivers of engagement. So for those of you that remember stats class, we do a regression analysis. So we look at what are some questions that are closely tied to our engagement anchor questions? And if we could increase engagement, what would we need to do? These were four of the drivers, meaning that these would, if we could find a way to increase perception around these four questions, we would also expect engagement to increase. My job provides me with sense of meaning and purpose. We see this three points higher than what we saw in 2019, meaning that 84% of employees agreed with in 2019. Now we have 87%. There were also nine points above the global benchmark and three points above what we typically see for colleges and universities. Maybe one of the polarizing questions, a little bit, just looking at the question 42, MCCD leadership understands what's going on in my particular college. That's a question that increased, but it's still quite significantly above or below our benchmarks. I think this is always one of those questions that is polarizing because what is the MCCD leadership to somebody out in an individual college? Sometimes they feel a little bit further removed from Maricopa County colleges overall. They're a little bit more connected to their college, they're even more connected to their specific department. And so it's nice to see that 14-point increase, still some, some opportunity there. If you skip two slides, we'll look at our, another analysis that we do. We do an attrition analysis. This is based on just two questions. I would recommend MCCD is a great place to work. And if given a choice, I would remain in the system, even if a job with similar pay and benefits were available elsewhere. Based on responses just to those two questions, you can see the distribution here. We would say that some people are fully committed, probably strongly agreed with both questions. Some people are sitting in the contempt, the undecided, or the high potential for turnover. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see the historical data here compared to benchmarks as well. Much better numbers than what we saw in 2019, 54% overall commitment versus 72% this year. And you can see the colleges and universities benchmark is at 63%. We also included the next couple of slides here. I won't go into detail, but similar to what we saw for engagement. If you go to the next slide, that is the perceptions of some of our groups. And if you go to the next slide again, you'll see again some of the negative, the lower responses, the unfavorable responses here for some of our, some of our groups. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And one more. Yeah, we looked at some common theme. We asked a couple of questions. One of them was, what are the greatest strengths of MCCD? Now, a really large theme that we saw, and this is our text analytic software that goes in and picks out some themes. The organization itself was mentioned a lot, coworkers and teamwork, education and general benefits was actually one that was mentioned there as well. And then if you go to the next slide, the other question that we asked is, if you could change one thing, what would you, about your college or the district office, what would it be? You see the organization itself, those are, it's a pretty broad category, pretty broad theme. Pay was mentioned, management, some comments about the job itself, work culture, and communication. So now, if you go to the next slide, now we're looking a little bit more specifically at individual questions. These were some of the questions that most employees agreed with. I'm personally accountable for the quality of work I produce. 96% of those that responded agreed with that question. You can see that a few of these, we haven't asked this question enough. It's a little bit more custom question. And so we don't have a good benchmark for that question. But all of these questions actually increased, even though they were pretty high-scoring, they did increase even more than they in 2019. The next slide is showing us the comparison to the global benchmark. And then the next slide, if you go to the next slide, you'll see the comparison to the colleges and universities benchmark. But again, I won't go into too much detail here. The next slide shows us our greatest gains. What were some of the questions that increased the most? And I think, I just want to pause here for a second because this is pretty remarkable to see, not just a couple of changes in the double digits, but we have one question that even goes into a 21-point increase from 40% agreement with this question to 61%. So MCCD cares about employees. That is a very tough question to influence directly. It's some of the other things that we have done, that you have done, that have influenced how some employees feel about whether or not they're cared for. Communication increased pretty significantly. We value the input of our employees. We share strategy and vision of the future. And I would recommend MCCD is a great place to work. Very, very significant increases here. With your population size, the people that took the survey, you know, really anything, I start looking in that four to five-point difference as really significant increases from the previous survey. So these are just the top five, but some very significant gains that we saw. The other couple of slides here, one of them that I picked out as a strength that I see in your data is there really is a very strong connection to the job that somebody does, whether it be, you know, feeling accountable for the work, feeling enjoyment, providing the person with a sense of meaning and purpose, and looking forward to coming to work. These are things that are leading to people's engagement as well. And I think, you know, when you have a passion for education and wanting to enrich the lives of students, this is, you know, maybe a little bit easier to find some of that personal connection to the work than it might be if you were in a manufacturing setting, or if you were in a different type of position where you maybe don't feel the impact of the individual in what you're doing. Let's skip two slides ahead. Elsa, now we're looking at, what are some of the low scores on the survey? You can see most of these, or at least the first three, are connected to MCCD. And again, I think there is that, there is a couple of steps removed for some people. Some people are, you know, thinking really mostly about their department, then some people would go to the college next, and then Maricopa County itself, colleges as the next level. So a little bit more removed maybe from some of the, you know, feeling like my voice is heard with, with all of Maricopa County colleges and districts. You can see here that there was some nice increases, 14-point increases compared to what we saw in 2019. There's still some opportunity there, I think, to really listen to employees. This is obviously part of what this survey is for, is to listen to the feedback and take some action. If you go to the next slide, we're looking at some of the lower benchmarks here, compared to our global benchmark. If you go to the next one, you'll see it compared to just some of the questions that were in the lower quartile here compared to colleges and universities. The next slide will show you what are the greatest losses. Typically, I show five here, but we actually only have two questions that we saw a decrease in. My work is valued. Saw that one drop five points. And then the success of my college or district office divisions personally important to me, that dropped four points. But those were the only two questions where we saw a loss in sentiment or perception. The next couple of things that I picked out here as opportunities, and now every college is a little bit different. And I think it's always exciting for the presidents of each college to get some insight into their specific data. So that's something that we have provided. But looking across all of Maricopa County Community Colleges, I think this employee voice and communication is an important area. We saw some really nice increases from 2019, but there's certainly still an opportunity here to continue to listen, continue to action on what the feedback is compared to benchmarks here. And you can see that there's a lot of neutral. There's a lot of people there that are a little bit on the fence. And I think those are some people that we can, we can definitely, we can definitely change their experience. If you go to the next one here, this is about change management. So are we making the right decisions? Are we engaging in the right amount of organizational change? Do we understand what's going on at each college? Do we do a good job of adapting to changes within the college or district office division? And do we effectively share strategy and vision of the future? Now, again, some really nice increases there, 46. The first question is a new question, so we don't have trending or benchmark there. And you can see a couple of other questions are a little bit more Let's go to the next slide. So really, just to round out the data portions, some really encouraging numbers, some really encouraging increases. You have employees that are very engaged in what they do. And I think there's still some great opportunity here, but I think you should be really encouraged by what we've seen in the change across the last four years. Matt, or Megan, or Giordetta, do you want to talk about some of the next steps here that you're expecting?
Thank you so much, Thomas. So President Sullivan, members of the board, next steps for us, we're going to issue communication across the organization to share this information and news with our employees. And then we're also looking at adding goals to the strategic plan around the Employee Engagement Survey results, so we can continue our progress forward. And the chancellor will be establishing an Employee Engagement Advisory Council, really focusing in on building strategies around those broad themes, those five things that were presented in the presentation. So we'll open up for questions now in reference to the presentation.
Thank you both for your comments this evening. I know you did move through this pretty quickly. And I've had the benefit of seeing that in my board packet. So I expect some of the other board members did as well. Given the nature of some of our board members having to leave to attend graduations and others, I will ask Dr. Thor first if she has any comments or questions, and then I'll go through the rest of the board members just to make it more organized if we feel that there's comment on this topic this evening. Dr. Thor, can you hear me and comment?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
First, I found this absolutely fascinating set of data. And contrary to Dr. Kelly's introductory remarks, I think we have a great deal to celebrate in these results. And I'm particularly taken by the significant improvement between 2019 and 2023. And where we had some significant gains, I'm actually not surprised because the board and the administration has been very intentional about things like caring for our employees and giving voice to our employees and so on. So I don't have any questions, but just congratulations to everyone for significant improvement in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. And please pass on our congratulations to the students at Rio on our behalf. I know you're there for their graduation this evening. Ms. Bitter Smith, are you available?
I am. I don't have any questions at the moment. I'd like to say thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to then move to Ms. Smith. Do you have any comments or questions?
It was very straightforward. Thank you for the presentation. No questions and congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Yeah, no questions. But I, as Dr. Thor said, it's really encouraging data that we're looking at. And I think that as we move forward, those numbers are just going to improve. Well, thank you for all that. That's great.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Ms. Davis?
I was just wondering when the survey was conducted.
Yes, Ms. Davis. We conducted the survey from
We conducted the survey from February 21st through March 10th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. So our results are just going to continue getting better.
That's the goal.
Thank you. Ms. Butler.
Thank you for the presentation. I was really encouraged by the improvements and just echo a lot of the comments that have already been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Yeah, just the ditto, same. A great survey, very informative, and thank you for all the hard work. And the results were very encouraging. Thanks.
Thank you. My comment would be a blend of everyone else's and the fact that I was here in 2019 when we saw the survey and expressed some concerns and then thought out loud about how we might address them really makes this I don't want to say gratifying particularly, but certainly encouraging that the direction of the leadership and the work of so many people and teams in their own work environments and within their college systems and others is really having an impact. So for those individuals who are paying attention to the survey for whatever reason, I think there's evidence that the conscious work we do together really can make a difference. And then talking about it's only going to get better, I think it's a reminder that we do, A, have to pay attention, B, listen, C, talk out loud about our opportunities and options for improvement, four, engage people, everyone, in finding the solutions, and then five, doing it, and six, holding ourselves accountable. And maybe too long a list, but I think this is the evidence that speaks to those strategies, those steps, and I'm encouraged, grateful for the growth, challenged by some of the opportunities, and hoping that we as a board, coupled with all the strata of employees and work and leadership in our district, that we can find those next steps that move us forward. So with that, when is, is there another plan or is there a plan to do these surveys in every two years? Annually, is there an intention by which we want to hold ourselves accountable to improvement in these areas? Dr. Kelly, do you have some guidance on that?
Yes, ma'am. President Sullivan, members of the board chancellor, we're looking at a three-year cycle for the engagement surveys. We may do pulse checks in between, especially around the themes, just to make sure we're continuing to move in the right direction.
Okay, thank. And you mentioned integrating some of these into the strategic plan. So those would be more frequent check-ins. So though you're talking about doing the survey in total on a different cycle, my sense is, if I heard you correctly, is that you would be integrating some of these items into strategic planning where we would be measuring them more often. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct, President Sullivan. We would do those checkpoints as part of our key performance indicators within the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. So the board had an opportunity to ask you questions. Do you have any questions of us as a board in light of any of this?
We do not at this time. We appreciate all of the feedback. We're excited. We want to also thank the employees of this organization for walking with us and walking together to get to a better place. So we will continue our path forward. Thank you.
Well, wonderful. Well, it's always good to keep going forward. Sometimes we stumble back, but our intention is to keep moving forward. So thank you for the efforts. Thank you for decision to, decision wise, for their involvement and investment in this with us. Thank you for your presentation this evening. And with that, folks, I'm going to adjourn our work session for this evening, May 9th. And will, in less than one or two minutes, call us into agenda review. But right now, we stand adjourned in our work session. So thank you, everyone, for your attention this evening. Well, that was fast, Elsa. You had that draft agenda up in no time.
Trying to get better at this.
You do fine. Thank you for accommodating us. So we've all blinked twice now, I think. And with that, I feel comfortable moving us directly into our agenda review. And as this necessitates, I'm going to remind everyone again that we are live captioning our meetings. So we want you to look in the chat window of our WebEx meetings where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of May 9, 2023. Today, we will review the agenda for the May 23, 2023 board meeting. I am going to call, we're all recognizing that some of the board members may have to leave shortly, but I'm going to again start with you, Mr. Burnett. Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Just checking, Dr. Thor. Okay, I believe Dr. Thor has moved on to the Rio.
Can you hear, no, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Okay, you're present. No problem. Thank you. This shows that all seven board members are present and our student trustee is also present. So we have full complement of folks. I'm going to start pretty quickly into moving into the agenda for that meeting, recognizing that we have two special meetings scheduled for May meeting. First is a public hearing. It's a truth and taxation and review of the fiscal year 24 budget. That will require me to call the meeting to order. We will then review the truth in taxation notice of a levy increase generated as a result of our primary secondary tax concerns. And we will then review the proposed Community College District Budget Fiscal Year adjourning then to the special session. Same protocol in that. Only this time, we will ask for motions for approval. So let me move to the special session. Approval of the tax levy increase for fiscal year and adopting the proposed Community College District Fiscal Year Budget 2324. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on those two items, item E2, item E3? If you have any questions, yes.
Sorry, President Sullivan. I do have a question on D3, the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2324. Thank you. I have been watching the legislative session closely, and I was hoping, and I think many of us were hoping, to see a fix for our expenditure limit, which would be just a temporary fix, but a fix nonetheless for the coming three years. Hope to see that in the budget this year, and so far, the budget was introduced and it's being debated, but it was not in this budget. So I'm wondering if we can hear what the impact would be if that expenditure limit is not corrected in this year in the budget.
So for clarification, I want to be clear. You're asking for the EL line item or comment on EL to the 2324 budget? Is that what I'm hearing?
President Sullivan, I, yes, I want to ensure that there is, my understanding is that there, that this legislative budget may not have an impact directly on the budget that we are seeking to approve in the next two weeks, but if it does have a large impact on subsequent budgets, I wonder if it's something that we, if it's something that we should consider with regard to this budget.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Greenio to address your question as it pertains to this budget, recognizing that we're not posted to talk about future budgets particularly, nor the legislative activity. I just want to remind everyone, it's not because we don't want to have robust conversations. It's just we need to stick to the item posted. So with that, Ms. Greenio, can you answer Ms. Butler's question to the degree you can keep it specific to our budget that's in front of us?
I'm happy to try to do that, President Sullivan. You know, I tend to just kind of just talk, and so I'll try to keep it to the 24 budget, but President Sullivan, Ms. Butler, so the fiscal year 24 budget that is presented in front of you today was first read last month is completely based on the presentation that I provided in March about expenditure limit and doesn't, the 24 budget itself doesn't contemplate the need for the expenditure limit reduced penalty that we're seeking through the legislature and we're hoping for as part of the budget. So we didn't build the budget based on that relief because it certainly wasn't in place at the time we developed the budget. But absolutely, we were hoping that that relief would come. And we're still hoping that the relief will come. If it doesn't, and there's no chance that anything else will be coming ahead of our plan to go to the voters in November of 24. And if there's reasons for us to make or consider adjustments during 24 or as we develop the 25 budget, we will certainly do that work. I think that there is still work happening now and trying to get something still in place yet for 24. So I don't know that hope is lost. But I can assure you that the budget you're looking at now isn't dependent or fully reliant on that relief. I hope that helps. Ms. Greenio, President Sullivan, thank you. That does help, and I appreciate, I am sure that everyone is thinking about the uncertainty of the situation and how we, you know, can be thoughtful moving forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Butler, do you have any other questions of concern around this budget where you see challenges or?
I do not. Thank you. I just, I wanted to see what it was in the context with this uncertainty created by this, the expenditure limit.
Thank you. And very valid concern and question. I may be calling a special meeting where we could talk more about the legislative activity. But since we are not posted for that this evening, I need to ensure that we stay in compliance with the rules and keep us moving forward with the agenda as posted for the 23rd. So folks, that would be comments to the D3 related to item E3, the adoption of the proposed budget. Once we move through D and E as noted on the agenda, we would then do. Yes, I know that the letters are different. Or go ahead, Dr. Norene, sorry.
No, I just had, I just had a question about the budget before we move on.
Sure, sure.
And I'm not even sure I'm reading it right. I was looking it over and got so tangled up in my head of what I was looking at. I'm not sure I was even reading it correctly. But I was, I was interested in scholarships and grants and student aid and that sort of thing. The one that, and again, this is where I'm not, not clear I'm reading the right, reading it the right way, but on page 36 of the budget.
Okay, you're going to give us a moment to get there? Okay.
It's, yeah, Schedule C?
Okay, I'm on 36. You probably want Ms. Greenio to be on 36, too.
I'm there.
So I'm looking at the scholarship line. And I see that we are decreasing that by 55.2%. And I just wondered what scholarships those are affecting and wow. At a time that we raised tuition and then we lowering scholarships, I was just, it just kind of, you know, put a little light bulb on me.
President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, so thank you for that question. I will delve into a little bit more detail. I do believe a portion of that reduction, though, is related to the HERF funds. So none of those HERF funds will continue into fiscal 24. So my guess is that is the reason for the large decrease.
Okay, so where, thank you. That does make sense then. Where does the Maricopa Grant come from? I mean, because I see that there's a couple pages where I saw something that looked like scholarships or student support, financial support. I think one's on page 19. And then another one on page 20, we were talking about scholarships and student support. And let's see if I can get to them.
So Dr. Norene, the Maricopa Grants are actually included in the general fund? So if you were looking at page 36 where we were previously, that 19.8 million, the Maricopa Grants is included in there. It's not all of it. The presidential scholarships, the chancellor scholarships, those are also included in that line item in the general fund.
Okay, so I guess my question is, what I'm trying to get to is with the Maricopa Grant, because it does cover so many different things. And I didn't even know where to look in the budget. Are we keeping that the same, increasing it, decreasing it? Or where are we with the, with the Maricopa Grant? I guess that's where the bottom line I was trying to get to.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. President Sullivan and Dr. Norene, the dollar amount for Maricopa Grants has not increased in some time. So it is staying the same from year to year.
Okay. All right, yeah, because I just had some concerns with our raising, increase in tuition and what that's going to do to our, to our students, especially with our early college and dual enrollment students. And we can talk about that when we get to dual enrollment, so.
Okay, thank you.
President Sullivan.
And yes, go ahead, next. Who was that?
Donna Davis.
Yes, Ms. Davis.
So my question, I hope, is very simple, Ms. Greenio. What does legal budget mean?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. President Sullivan, Board Member Davis, the legal budget is the document that we are required to present based on statute and rules set by the Auditor General's Office based on those statutes. So it's a prescribed format that all, at least community college districts use, but I suspect that other political subdivisions of the state, counties, and cities also have something that's probably very similar to this. And it's just extremely prescriptive in how we present the data. And the primary reason for that is for comparability from one community college district to the next. You will always find a legal budget in every one of the 10 community college districts budget book, if you will. The rest of the schedules are really up to us as to how we want to present them. So it's kind of the easy way that they can compare from school to school or district to district. And then that legal budget, so those two pages, there's actually a Schedule A as well. So it's probably, I guess it's three pages. That actually gets published in the newspaper as part of our annual budget process, which again is required by statute.
Thank you, Ms. Greenio. That totally explains it for me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other board member who has a budget question? Tied to the budgets that will be presented to us for approval, I would encourage you, if you have any other questions regarding the budget for 2324 as currently presented. If you stumble on a question or a concern, you may certainly put that in writing to Ms. Greenio with a carbon copy to Dr. Gonzalez. At that point, I would be answered and all of us as board members would learn the answer. So not that I'm suggesting more things for Ms. Greenio to have to respond to, but I know certainly the closer you get to approving an item, sometimes you take a little more due diligence. So certainly, if anything else occurs, let's say in the next week, and you have a question, please feel free to send that in writing to Ms. Greenio with a carbon, to Dr. Gonzalez and Elsa. please feel free to send that in writing to Ms. Grineo with the carbon to Dr. Gonzalez and Elza. And then I know Ms. Grineo and her team would ensure that we would get a timely response to be prepared to address the budget with a vote on the next full board meeting in two weeks. Does that work for everyone? I'm seeing you nod in my in my imagination. Okay, thank you. So after the public hearing, the special session, we will move to a regular meeting. I will call roll. We'll go through the the normal continuum of reports. We will have a student life report from Rio. And as we move into the Chancellor's Report, it's noted that we will hear some updates from him. But we will also have a significant update from the foundation, so we'll look forward to that. Then after that, we will move to citizens interim after that to the consent agenda. And I note that we have two faculty emeritus recognitions that evening. And then we move on into other items for consideration and approval. So let's take item four, approval of acceptance of new grant award from the U.S. Department of Education to South Mountain Community College for the Title V Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions Project Students to Professionals: Learning in the Context of Careers for one of five in the amount of $593,081 for the period from October 1, 23 to 9/30/2024. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Moving in on to item five, approval of acceptance of continuation grant from the Arizona Department of Education, Adult Education, and U.S. Department of Education to Rio Salado College for fiscal year 24, the College Bridge Pathways from July 1, 23 to June 30, 24, in the amount of $5,664,132. Any comments or questions from board members on that? Item six, approval of the Gateway Community College Industrial Technology Division for the Army Corps of Engineers contract in the amount of $866,704 to teach three weekly heating, ventilation, and air conditioning commissioning classes per year for five years total. Are there any comments or questions on item six? Item seven, approval of expenditure budgeted funds not to exceed $650,000, including tax over five years for the purchase of Team Dynamix, an IT service management platform for the time period of May 31, 23 to May 30, 2027. Do we have any comments or questions on that item? Item eight, approval to issue a purchase order to G-Con Inc. in the amount of $441,536.01 for a tenant improvement project at Gateway Community College Deer Valley location. Are there any comments or questions on that? Item nine, approval to issue a purchase order in the amount of $542,078.43 to EMCOR Services Arizona for central plant piping and valve reconfiguration at Paradise Valley Community College. Do we have any comments or questions on that item? Item 10, approval to issue purchase order to USA Roofing in the amount of $418,215 for the Montezuma Hall roof replacement at Australia Mountain Community College. Are there any comments or questions? Item 11, approval of a construction contract award in the amount of $1,960,411.87 to Cactus Asphalt, the Division of Cactus Transport for the 23 district-wide annual summer pavement maintenance program. That almost sounds like it should have a party with it, you know, the annual summer. Okay, enough of my comment. Any other comments or questions from board members? Being none, item 12, approval of request for proposal award to Tran Chandler Asset Management, Inc. for investment advisory services to the district beginning July 1, 23 for one year with options for annual renewals for up to four additional years. There any comments or questions? Being none, item 13, approval of registered nurse to Bachelor of Science in Nursing to be offered at Gateway Community College beginning in fall of 2024. Any comments or questions? I'll just comment. I think that's very exciting. Moving on, item 14, approval of dual enrollment IGA between charter, private, public, and tribal schools as listed below and Maricopa Community College District through June 30, 2024. And did I hear that you had a question, Dr. Norini?
On this item? Question and comment. First of all is, wow, that's that's great. So is this is this number more than we've had in the past? And how many schools total? Because I see there's 23 districts. And then what is it about 28, 29 charter schools and 12 private schools? Do we? So first of all, is that more than we've had in the past or and then how many schools total is that?
So I don't know who is best to answer that question, but if it is you, please speak up, whoever.
President Sullivan, this is Bettina Sellest. I think I'll defer this response to Dr. Keisha Brock as her team provides leadership in this area.
Okay, thank you very much, Sellest.
President Sullivan, Dr. Norini, yes, we are seeing growth in the number of dual enrollment institutions we have agreements with. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I can definitely follow up to get you a count. We're seeing a lot of growth, as you can see, in the charter school area. And I do think also some additional, actually, I think all the growth is in the charter school area. But I can get you an exact number and follow up.
Yeah, and then which, if you could, which which colleges they're associated with?
Yeah, absolutely. That won't be a problem at all.
So to follow up on that and to follow up with my first question on the budget and the and the Maricopa Grant, this is where my concern comes in, is that in 2022, the growth that we've had in enrollment at at Maricopa was in the dual enrollment more than more than anyplace else. I think we had a 10-year high of enrollment and in dual enrollment. But my concern is with the Maricopa Grant and how that's, you know, because I know that that supports so many of our of our students through dual enrollment and through our early college programs, through ACE and so on. With the increase of tuition, I'm just wondering what kind of impact that that may have on our enrollment with dual enrollment and with our ACE and other early college programs. If we have any, I don't know if that's a comment or a question, because I am concerned that yeah, I am. I'm just concerned about that, what how that's going to impact us.
President Sullivan, Dr. Norini, agreed that how we are going to continue to fund the growth, especially in some of our underserved student populations where where tuition may be a barrier is of concern. I know that we have begun conversations with the foundation to search for additional funding opportunities for early college and dual enrollment so that perhaps we can generate some scholarship opportunities there. I also know that there's some legislation moving through that we're we are hopeful might help with some of this. But I agree, figuring out a better way or a more robust funding source, given the size of this program now at almost 23,000 students, it definitely needs to be a priority.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, because and I agree, because and I think maybe that we may have to, you know, given the the legislation that's out there, the 1717 that's out there. If I read it right, which, you know, there's no guarantee of that, any any extra money that's coming out is going to the high schools and not and not to the college. Do we want to reconsider the way the MOU is written so that it does? We do kind of encourage the high schools to to use it as scholarships?
President Sullivan, Dr. Norini, I'm not certain about that. I would have to defer to Kim Grineo or others. I do think that at some point, we may need to have a strategic conversation about the formula that we're using to fund dual enrollment. But I definitely do not have the answer to that at this time.
Okay, yeah, because I did a quick calculation because my work with with Phoenix Union and Phoenix College, I know that the Maricopa Grant for or at at Phoenix College, anyway, they they had about a half million dollars. And my quick calculation says that that's going to be about 730 fewer credits that we'll be able to offer, offer students with a grant because of the the increase in tuition. My other my other concern is about those students who are both dual enrollment and ACE students or early college students. Will we be, will we be putting a limit on what the students can get in terms of the Maricopa Grant? So that because because I know that we have, we have several students who are able to graduate with their associate's degree because of dual enrollment and the ACE program. Are we gonna are we gonna cap what students get in with the with the with the Maricopa Grant, the the high school students?
We have done some capping. It's written within the Maricopa Grant guidelines to make sure that more students have the opportunity to take advantage of at least one or two dual enrollment courses. However, typically, the funds for ACE and dual are are separate. So I don't think that ACE students necessarily get penalized if they're taking ACE and dual, also because there is some funding available specifically for ACE. But we could definitely look into that to make sure that there's the opportunity for students to take as many courses as they want to. Within reason, of course, because again, if it if it extends too much, then we perhaps with the finite pot of money, limit the opportunity for others. And the research shows that even the chance to take, you know, one or two dual enrollment courses increases the likelihood that students will graduate high school and transition from high school to college.
Yes, and I appreciate that, because I know that's true. And if you could double check on whether ACE students are getting funded through the the Maricopa Grants or not, that'd be helpful. Because I know Phoenix College, you know, with the with the grant that they received, that the foundation was able to get for them, were able to use that that money to help support the ACE, but and which allowed them to, you know, do more with with dual. But I don't know about the other campuses. I always assumed that the other campuses used Maricopa Grant to fund both ACE and and their dual students.
Okay, and those are all good questions and comments, Dr. Norini, and thank you, Dr. Brock, for responding. But I won't. So we're into the dual enrollment IGA discussion, not the budget on this issue. And I know you always have, Dr. Norini, a lot of really good questions. So is there anything that is pertinent in the remainder of the questions that you have?
That's fine.
Okay, and I'm sure there's other ways that that we can get answers to your questions. But I do want to keep us on track with the items in front of us. So thank you and thank you for your curiosity. And thank you, Dr. Brock, for the answers. Moving on then to item 15, approval of the Gateway Early College High School Fiscal Year 22 Assessment Consent Agreement and the Arizona Department of Education that requires the board to approve this agreement to ensure compliance with testing requirements. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on item 15? On item 16, approved renewal of student insurance program policies for fiscal year 2324 with Mutual of Omaha Accident and Catastrophe, catastrophic, effective August 1, 23 through July 31, 24. Wealth Fleet Insurance Company International Student Insurance, effective August 11, 23 through August 10, 24. Are there any comments and questions on that? Okay, item 17, approval of communications and public relations service vendors. List is noted Davidson Beluso, Gordly Group, High Noon, Lane Tara Lover, Lovage, Lincoln Strategy Group, Mccone Strategies, Reister, I know I'm mispronouncing that one, and Urias Communications. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Being none, we'll then move to item 18, approval of curriculum. We have deletions new and modifications. We have course deletions one, new 20, modifications six. In occupational programs, we have five modifications, two new, three deletions. And in academic programs, there is one new. There any comments or questions on item 18? Being none, move to item 19, approval of proposed Gateway Community College course fee changes resubmitted for the Fall Semester Fiscal Year 2324 budget. Are there any comments and questions on item 19?
I have one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I don't know if we want to do this. I need to wrap it up with with number 20 as well. I've got comments on on both of those because they're both related. But I want to thank I want to thank Gateway for for giving Ms. Butler and Ms. Davis and I a tour of the of the campus and the facilities and help give us a better understanding of the course fees that they're that they're requesting for for this upcoming year. So that was helpful for us. And I'll save my next comment so I can wrap it into number 20.
Okay, any other comments on 19? Being none, moving to item 20, approval of proposed course fee changes, special collection for Fall Semester Fiscal Year 2324. And you know my comments, Dr. Norini.
Okay, well, my my comment is that we've been working on this for a long time. And the what my my comment on these is the the request form that we're using is is in need of a lot of help. We need to revise it so that when people do ask for a request for or fee increases, they can adequately describe. I think that was the problem with Gateway. We didn't get provide them the opportunity to adequately to describe why their the fee needed to be increased and for what amount. This one, number 20, is a good example. We're asking, no fees were changed, course numbers were changed, but each college did it differently. Like Mesa and Gateway, they explained this is this class is replacing this class. And so that was that was fine. So we understood that. Some of the other colleges didn't tell us what those classes were replacing. They just insinuated that in there. So we had to, you know, I had to anyways, go back and do my my due diligence and figure out which of those classes were. And so so and so what we need, I mean, this is the whole thing with the fees, the fee committee, the fee structure. We need to, we need to work on this. And I don't know how many times we have to ask about this fee committee and 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 the 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 issues with fees and what we're charging students and the transparency of it, but it's not it's not transparent. And so again, I'm going to ask for if we're if there's any movement on the committee and where we're going to go with it.
Okay, what I'm going to say is, first of all, the item is approval of the course fee changes. Your recommendation is backing up to something we've talked about, which is regarding a committee and and the consistency that's necessary for us to to receive complete information. I don't want to get us off the topic of approval. And I suppose so if you are saying that in order for you to continue to support approval of changes, it's important for you to know the status of the committee. I'm going to ask Dr. Gonzalez to answer that. If it's about the committee separately, I have to move us on. So.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Well, I know.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, because we've been going on for this for four years and nothing's happened. And I'm just, I'm just giving up.
Well, we don't want you to give up and we can certainly hear your frustration. Dr. Gonzalez, because we can't attend to that thoroughly in this meeting, I would like you to, if you could, if you're there, still there. I know you also have a graduation to go to and may have had to step away. If you're still present. If you're still present, it'd be good for you to give us an update, the board, an update off the agenda of, of the status and where we are going forward with next steps and a timeline. Think we can do that.
Yes, President Sullivan and Dr. Narini, this, this group that you're referring to, the group has been formed, and the scope has been created for this committee. It's, it's got many people on it, and scheduling the actual meeting is, is proven to be the challenging part. And of course, May is a difficult month to do that. I, I, I can understand your frustration and apologize for the amount of time that this has taken to, to come to fruition. It is not intentional, I assure you of that, Dr. Narini. And we take this work seriously, we take our requests from our board members very seriously. And we are looking forward to the, the work of this group and your participation on it. So I appreciate your patience, and again, I apologize for the length of time that it's taken for this group to actually come together.
I, I appreciate that, but in, in, I, I don't want to get off the topic, but transparency is important, and I haven't had any.
Um, duly noted, and Dr. Gonzalez, I expect you will, you can answer that in a different manner in, in a memo to us later, to keep us on topic here, please. So I'm going to move us to item 21, approval of the Arrow Marketplace Contract for Arizona Small Business Development Center Network in the amount of $381,000 for year one between Ropen Networks and Maricopa County Community College Arizona Small Business Development. Is there any comment or question on item 21? Being none, then I'm going to move us to comment on the non-consent action items. First item, or item one to be considered is the second read and adoption of governing board policy changes. Those would be to 1.0 outcomes, 1.0 global ends broadcast, broadest outcome, 1.1 university transfer education and general education, 1.2 workforce and economic development, 1.3 developmental education, 1.4 community development and civic and global engagement, and 4.1 governing values. Board members, again, next meeting would be an adoption of these after a second reading. Do you have any comments or questions? Being none, then the next item would be approval to implement the fiscal year salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan as approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy 2.7, Staff Compensation and Benefits. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on item two in this section?
President Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor?
I want to be sure that I'm reading correctly. The item regarding livable wage, the way I'm reading it is all Maricopa employees will now be at livable wage or higher, is that correct?
Dr. Kelly, are you present?
Yes, I am, President Sullivan, members of the board. I'm going to have Frank respond to that question. Dr. Wilson? And I think he's having trouble. All of the individuals will be moved to livable wage, yes, throughout this next, throughout this year's compensation activity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item? Being none, I'm going to move us then to the next item, where we will have a first read and information on employment and separation for March 18, 23 through April 14, 23. There any comments and questions on that? Item two would be the first read of governing board policy changes to 3.2, accountability of the chancellor, and 3.4, monitoring the chancellor's performance. Are there any comments or questions on that item? As noted, we also have a placeholder for the Arizona Auditor General Presentation of Maricopa County Community College District's Fiscal Year 21, 22 Audit Reports and Results pursuant to Arizona Statute 151473F. It's a placeholder, that means it's pending. I believe it will take place, but again, not absolutely sure. In the meantime, are there any other comments or questions? Being none, then we would then move to the monitoring reports, also placeholder for Budget Analysis Report Fund I, General Unrestricted Fund for the 10 months ending 4/30/2023. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, the last part of the meeting will be tied to governing board reports, current event summaries, et cetera. And as many of you know, board members are attending convocations, graduations. I think everyone's wish is they could be everywhere all at once, but it's not happening. So we're sharing responsibilities. Some certainly having opportunities to be present more than others, but everyone's investment in those activities is certainly top of mind. We will, after that board meeting, convene in a governing board retreat on June 2. We are scheduled for a June 13 special meeting regarding the charter high school budgets. And then that will be followed by an agenda review meeting. And on June 27, once again, we will hold a public hearing that will be regarding the charter high school budgets. And that will then immediately be followed by the governing board meeting, the last one of the fiscal year. So that's what's in store. I want to ask board members, do you have any comments or questions on the agenda for this evening, going forward to the 20, May 23? There being none, there's a lot of, I just want to comment, there's a lot of activity going on. Board members, to keep you up to date and transparent, I may be calling a special meeting regarding our legislative activity and possibly more updates on the expenditure limitation. Stay tuned, you know that open meeting laws require that we only speak to what we post, number one, and number two, no convening of more than three board members can happen to discuss any item unless it's a posted meeting, special e-session, or regular. So keeping all those rules in mind does make this sometimes cumbersome when we want to come together to talk about something quickly, when we all want, all of us to hear the same thing, where we want to have discussion. So working within those parameters sometimes is inconvenient and can't happen as quickly as we want. But know that to the best of our ability, we're trying to attend to that. So to the degree that there may be any special meetings being called, just pay attention. Elsa, I know, would certainly call you in addition to finding other creative ways to let us know. And if you have any concern on any issue that's outside of the agenda that you'd like addressed, please feel free to make note of that, and we can either put it on the agenda with appropriate notice, or we can handle it in a different manner. So just with that reminder, I want to wish everyone a good evening, successful graduations to the schools that are still waiting for those wonderful opportunities for those students. And I want to thank everyone for being present this evening. It means a lot to know that so many people are paying attention and are invested in our student success and how we can best be good stewards of our fiscal resources while achieving that. So thank you, everyone, have a good night, be safe out there, and we'll chat soon. Thank you.